To the agenda tonight. Now, a motion to approve the agenda is presented. Motion second. Motion second, I would say, I oppose. Motion carries. Now, we'll open up the public comments if there's anyone who'd like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Please come forward. So, now, we'll rush the podium, we'll close public comments, and move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda to be pulled for further discussion? As part of the consent agenda, we do have the Sheriff's Department report on there. W. Skelton, do you have anything you want to add, um, tonight, that would be appropriate?
As far as this was just one of the areas that happened in 2016, we switched on how we report. Brian, in terms of what kind of bill, on the vote, July, 2016, they had nothing compared to this. I went four years last year, February, to compare to this time, uh, or this year. So, just off the top of my head, I ran some numbers again. First quarter, so, this year, there were about twenty more calls than there were last year. Those could be fire calls, which means that, uh, all of a sudden, uh, maybe the weather's not as fresh as something. Other than that, we are hearing significant stuff that happens this quarter here, um, that you know now that, um, right, thirty mile an hour speeds, for their very own, just, uh, on the weather, might be, probably has a plus, on, so. Some point here in spring, whatever, our plan, like, schedule, that's, uh, that's, uh, right. But it's on Saturday, that's the most, it's happening, Saturday morning, so, um, so, what I said by these, probably, definitely, so, probably, but, again, it's going to be weather related.
I appreciate that.
It's going to be more educational stuff, less familiar. The problem is, is we don't have people constantly go over there that we have to have to eat for that, if they really want back to work, so, it's certainly, uh, so. Other than that, any other, sort of, trail stop, other than the stop sign, that, uh, tree, lot, dirty? Otherwise, everything else is covered. Uh, I know we had some, the bikeers, on the stop, stop sign, like, this, like, stop, that's going to be, have to work on our rest services, so, and then I can perhaps, uh, okay, good. Other than that, and all, uh, part of the general, uh, question, parts of, parts of the law, and, yeah, whatever, that is resolved, but, um, um, they handle, or, okay, part of it is taken on the morning, or, situations, whatever.
Yeah, we'll get together if he wants to get that language set, um, we're having our attorneys look at it right now, because, of course, we're going to take a look at that, um, from that aspect, so, certainly, we're going to do some assistance.
I don't know, probably, based on what I see.
Yeah, that's right, and those are the weight loss, it's driving majority of this, so.
Other than that, um, I'm, 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 if any, I try to let people know, all the way, I'm sure, times, you know, people call, and, you know, on Saturday, and they give me a voicemail, and show that I have a Saturday night, and I can't wait any longer, it happens, so, I'm trying to, all that, with, other than, uh, really, traffic, um, uh, or, or, stops, like.
About any other trends, uh, that are being gone right now in the city, anything else that's been sitting here somewhere right now, or, about Tony Riley, that, that's going on, that maybe?
A lot of the health, uh, every seventy, uh, sixty, all the way, left the big concerns, but, uh, but, uh, these are, uh, seventy, seventy, old, seventy, seventy one, they're not, uh, higher than seventy five, they're eight, so, they're, uh, uh, that's.
Good. Yeah, we'll continue to, uh, talk, so, definitely, so, our plan will be, if it works for you, then, try to get you here, on support, um, talk through things, um, see, you know, see what's going on, like, we can say what you're seeing, what we can help with, what we can educate with, and, you know, see that conversation going, so. Yeah, yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll have the truth, yeah, watch for next time, it's known, uh, that we're in, right? All right, perfect, well, thank you for coming in. All right, any mail, some claims, any other comments, concerns, okay, a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented. Motion second. Motion second, I would say, I, I oppose. Motion carries. Now, move to six A, so, we'll research our council meeting, and open a public hearing, uh, to discuss the ordinance amending Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter Ninety Two, Animal Section Ninety Two Point Zero Two, Dogs and Cats, Letter E, Limitation by Adding Language in Relation to Multiple Animal License.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'll just do a little overview, quick, of the proposed change, and then, um, we will open it up, um, for any, anyone in the audience to, to speak about, um, the proposed changes. Um, so, a little bit of action that we're requi- or, that's being requested is, um, the City of Mayor has initiated a text amendment in the relation to an exemption to possess harbor shelter or keep more than three adult animals. Currently, the City allows for three adult animals, um, per household. Um, sections of the City code proposed to be amended, as the Mayor stated, is, um, Section Ninety Two Point Zero Two, Dogs and Cats, E, Limitation. A little bit of the background, um, we did receive a request by a resident to be allowed to possess more than three adult animals. Uh, it did bring up a discussion, uh, about the number of animals, um, per household, if that number should change or not. At the March sixth, two thousand eighteen, Joint, um, City Council Planning Commission Meeting Discussion centered on the specific cases where more than three adult animals could be okay. Uh, it was suggested that a text amendment be prepared to allow for exemptions to be granted by the City Council for specific animals above the current requirement of three. Um, this includes if, um, like, an example would be if somebody's parrot passed away who had animals, and they took in those animals, and it was, then, they had their own animals, and the, the amount, um, was more than three. Um, at this time, we are doing a public hearing to amend the Section Ninety Two Point Zero Two, um, the limitation by adding language regarding exemptions for more than three adult animals. Um, I'll go over that a little bit. So, uh, a little bit of the change in Section E would be that it would be unlawful for any resident to, in the city, to possess more than three adult dogs or cats, um, except, like, if there was a veterinary hospital or pet shop, other establishments, proper, properly licensed by the city. Uh, maintaining multiple animals, um, no more than three, is allowed at the moment, at any, per one resident, at any time, without first obtaining a multiple animal license from the city. This would be the new license procedure that would have to take place, and, um, per City Council approval, it would be, um, a, a maximum of five adult dogs or cats can be maintained with City Council approval. Um, the City would have to draft a, um, uh, application, and also, as part of that application, there would have to be approval by, um, the abutting properties, uh, adjacent to that property that's requesting. Um, but that, that doesn't mean that, um, I mean, that, while that would be a consideration for the council to approve or deny, it doesn't mean that the council can just deny based on that fact. Um, there could be conditions, uh, that the council could put on, um, on this contract, uh, depending on the circumstances, um, and each license that's applied for will be conditioned upon, um, the total number of animals. Um, like, so, if an animal in that group did pass away, you couldn't substitute the animal for another one. Um, the, there would be a period, um, the applicant would have to maintain, keep maintenance of the property, keep it in clean and healthful conditions at all times. Um, if there is a reason to revoke the license, it could come into, they would be notified, um, and they could come to the council as part of that process to, to, um, what's the word, um, to fight that. But, um, there would be a process if, if it did become a nuisance, and if, if they weren't following the contract, that it could be revoked. There would be a fee associated, um, that is yet to be determined, um, by the fee schedule. Um, so, at this time, that's kind of a summary of, of the changes that would, would, or the additions that would take place in the limitation of animals. Um, after the public hearing, and we hear comments, comments from residents or the audience, um, there are multiple actions that the council could take. They could recommend approval of the text amendment with conditions, um, there could be, uh, there's an ordinance listed in the packet, uh, the council could approve it with changes, table the text amendment to another time, or recommend denial, um, of the text amendment. So, at this time, I would say we, we could open it up for comments.
Yep, if anyone would like to comment on this, please come forward. Maggie, sure, are there any written comments that need to be brought to our attention for consideration?
We did not receive any written.
Okay, thank you. No written comments, you'll take the podium, we'll close the public hearing, and, uh, after you're back in the council, meeting for discussion on this matter. Motion on that? The way this is, 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 you have to sell your dogs, or, possibly, your dogs, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, for, uh, or?
Yeah, well, depends, 'cause this is for adult animals, six months and older, so, um, I guess it depends if you're breeding dogs, if they're under six months, they aren't counted as, as one of the adult animals. Um, if, there is a, a section of our code that does cover cattle licensing, so, if, if somebody is, kind of, doing, um, you know, it depends, I guess, on, I, I would say that this would not, probably, be something that that would qualify under. Um, this is more in those unique circumstances.
You're right, I think there's a certain, some exception for cattle, for, uh, for, uh, this.
Um, it might be B, reduction in number. Yeah, so, what it's saying is, you're essentially entering into a contract, and if any of those animals, um, do pass away, then you cannot replace it.
So, somehow, we're going to make it, uh, very short, where the approval, subject to, oh, sure, yeah, right.
Mm-hmm. Um, when they, we're, like, it, they'll have to have each animal license, and with that contract that we create, so, all of the animals will be registered in that contract, which is important. Um, I mean, we'll, we're, the contracts are, or the agreements are for a lim- can be for a limited time, so, we would write a letter, um, I think, gather facts during that, like, let's say, at six months, we'll gather facts during that six months, if anybody isn't set, or complains, or neighbors, um, we'll write a letter to them, or call them, and say, okay, it's six months, let's re-review this, and, and see how it's going.
And that's pretty true, is, more than you state, sure, but, uh, particularly.
Right, like, we can revoke, yeah, but they do have a, they have the ability to appeal, or come to that meeting, that we're, we're discussing it, and they can, kind of, state their case. Um, so, I think it's, it'll be, like, an open dialogue, or.
... and they were by chance in court. And just for me, it's not a problem to overcome it by going to court. However, here's the attorney, and we have to be attorney, I don't know how much that costs. So we're talking fifty dollar citation and a fine for raising the case. Two, three hundred dollars for your city attorney to go. Right, we got the cost.
Yeah, I, I think, um, we did meet with the new attorney this, or I met the mayor with the new attorney, and I think that's kind of a new process that we're gonna be discussing, kind of our new policy as to how we're going, like, who's gonna be managing what and how we're gonna, you know, revamp the enforcement process. Um, right now, we're trying to do the education route, putting more on Facebook, on newsletter, um, just to kind of re-educate people, okay, this is how we gotta, this is all we need to do, um, cutting grass, harshing requirements, so, should we get there?
Yeah, sticking back on, trying to get it back on with the, uh, the agenda item here. On the added, added dog or animal. I'm okay with it, um, I'm, I'm not real clear on the neighbor part of it. So if they get neighbors, they have to give neighbors approval, but if they don't give approval, we can still, we can still, a lot, is, is there even a reason to?
Yeah, it, um-
Get neighbors approval then if we didn't hold it back?
They make them notify?
Yeah, I guess that is more of a heads up then.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, that's more of a heads up, yeah, that's true, it, yep.
I agree.
Yep, that's true. Okay, any other comments on, on the proposed language? Someone would like to make a recommendation, um, as is, or if they'd like to table this, if there's discussion, or a motion to deny it? Looking for, for an action to take on.
Make the motion to, for the ordinance, that's what's written.
Second.
Okay, I have another motion, second.
That would be ordinance two nineteen.
Yep, to accept, um, ordinance two nineteen, accepting the language as presented. Any further discussion?
The attorney, the neighbor.
It's a matter, uh, this one that happened. Any other discussion? All of them say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, then we will recess, council meeting, one more time for another public hearing, uh, for the ordinance remanding Title XI Business Regulation Regulations, Chapter One Fourteen, Sexually Oriented Businesses by adding new section one one four, point four zero, Location of Sexually Oriented Businesses. Then if you wanna give a quick overview, and then we'll, um, allow people to come speak.
Yep.
Um, Mayor and Council, uh, in front of you is some information about a text, a proposed text amendment in relation to setbacks for sexually oriented businesses. This, um, is current, currently regulated by Chapter One Fourteen. Um, and this new section would regulate the loc-, uh, put a little more regulation on, um, the location of sexually oriented businesses. Uh, the, a te-, so a little bit of background, um, this came about when we were doing a text amendment, um, that was recently approved by the City Council to add some uses to the C one General Commerce District and the Commercial Industrial District, um, just to allow, uh, more uses in these districts. As part of that discussion, sexually oriented uses as a permitted use, um, was removed from the C one, um, General Commerce District. Uh, so that was removed from one section, but, um, maintained in another section. We cannot completely eliminate this from the city code. It has to be permitted somewhere in our code, um, so it's maintained its, um, place at, in the Commercial Industrial District. Um, it was also discussed to require setbacks from certain uses. Um, so essentially, um, this public hearing is set up to add language regarding setbacks, uh, relate, uh, to allow setbacks from schools, religious institutions, public parks, and residential zoned areas. Uh, so the proposed language, um, will, i- it lays out that, um, they shall not be located or operated within one thousand three hundred twenty feet of the following, which is re-, uh, the boundary of any residential agricultural district, the property line of, of resident, uh, devoted to residential use, a religious institution, a public or private educational facility in a public park. Um, and it just goes into a little more detail as to how, um, the setback is measured. Um, so at this time, um, we can accept public comment, and again, action tonight is to recommend approval of the text amendment, um, with or without further, uh, additions, um, table the text amendment to another time, or recommend denial of the text amendment.
All right, thank you. Somebody would like to have public comment? Maggie, have we had any, uh, written comments, um, that need to be, for our consideration on this?
Uh, we have not.
All right, thank you. No written comments, and, uh, no public comments at this time, so we'll close the public hearing and enter back into regular council for further discussion on the site.
So, we've got it in the first place because we're quite much, you know?
Right.
And then no one came to agree to the property that we kind of amended the ordinance for in the first place and asked to have a-
Nobody has asked to have any. This was just kind of something that came, that was brought up when we were reviewing the amendments to the C one and the C Commercial Industrial Districts. So upon that review, this was kind of brought up as, does this need to be in both districts? It was eliminated from one district, and then further kind of regulation was put in, is, would be put in place if we passed it.
Some more robust language, more stringent, uh, requirements for these types of things.
Yep.
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 So this in no way affects, uh, Chapter One Fourteen ordinance that we have on sexually oriented businesses? It only has to do with the distance from specific sites currently-
Um, so it just, it, you know, it affects Chapter One Fourteen in that it adds more regulation?
Just for distances? But not what the business can be and the square footage of?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, the traditional, um, one forty, point four zero, and add that whole section's being added in, correct, Maggie?
Correct, yep.
And your rights are all changes to the other.
Yep, so it'll be just adding language?
Any other clarifications, comments on that? Uh, what's our action to, uh, recommend ordinance two twenty, um, accepting the language presented, uh, or a motion to table it, or deny, um, or, um, some, some other specific, um, changes currently to the ordinance? Motion, second, to accept ordinance two twenty as presented, any further discussion?
So where would, in our current city now, where would it be limited to?
It's now in the Commercial Industrial, which is in our, um, of the-
It's about the green light part, it would be limited to at this point?
Yep.
All of them say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, now, Maggie, take us to seven A, Veterans Memorial Side Mark.
So, this item, I just included a map, and I did, um, provide a little information, or I'll present a little information on this topic. Stan was, Stan Halt, um, had contacted me, um, regard, uh, in, as a representative of the Veterans Memorial Committee, um, this, as you can tell, um-
Maggie, before I get too deep, it's Stan, he's gotta be here to present, you know?
Stan is not here.
Which is someone else in the Veterans Board who's presenting on behalf of Stan, okay?
Well, so maybe we should-
So we can either table it, I think we're gonna need a lot of information from Stan.
Right, yeah.
Um, I think we either table it tonight's meeting, or we can-
Oh, you know what?
Skip right now, move to an agenda and-
Maybe come back if they-
Come back if maybe, but, um-
I, you know, as I, as you say that, I think they did say that they might be a little late to meeting tonight, um-
All right.
So we'll maybe table it for now, and then if they come-
So can we just table it, and re-, relook at it back to the meeting? That's okay though?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do that for now, then. Let's go to seven B, one, Park Shelter.
Okay, so, um, as you know, uh, the council did approve, uh, going out for bid for the Old School House Park Shelter. Um, and bidding, competitive bidding law requires cities to use the process for certain contracts about, that exceed a dollar threshold. Um, typically, this involves solicitation of field bids and award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. Um, since this project was above a hundred thousand dollars, um, we went out for bids. We did, um, get three bids for this project. Um, they were opened on April fifth. The highest bid came in at four hundred fourteen thousand, the lowest came in at three hundred twenty-nine thousand. We were projecting, um, the bid, the project to be around, I mean, two hundred fifty-eight thousand. Um, it was explained to me, um, by the architect that a lot of bids right now are coming in a lot higher. Construction costs are, are, much, for materials and labor are up, and so, um, it did come in quite a bit higher than, than we were thinking. Um, uh, we did bring, I did bring this information to the last, um, Park Commission meeting. They did discuss it, um, and they did, uh, express their disappointment, um, and did recommend that, um, while it is up to the City Council, they did recommend that they did not wanna spend that amount of money at this time on the project because I think the current balance, um, that they have saved is about three hundred twenty thousand, and they didn't wanna go, um, they, they weren't able to, they didn't wanna spend all that money and more at this time, and so, um, there was a recommendation by them to reject the bids and to possibly discuss holding off on the project for the time being and probably rebidding it in the future, like in fall or next spring. Um, like I said, it is up to the council, though, to decide what they wanna do with the bids. Um, they can be approved, they can be rejected. Um, the architect did reach out to the, the lowest bidder and asked if this was a, um, if they felt like this was a comfortable bid that they proposed, that three hundred twenty-nine thousand they were, um, they, they did say that that was a, a good, comfortable bid that they proposed to the city. Um, so they are ready to do the project if approved, but, um, so just for your discussion, um, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, any clarification, any, any questions for Maggie on that? If not, I'll look for a motion to reject the bid for Old School House Park Shelter. Motion, second. Motion, second, any further discussion? So this is waiting to move into the, moving to, moving to- We'll have to talk about that at, at another work session, I guess, and figure out what we wanna do with that, if we wanna leave it, continue to use it for storage, care, now, a little bit, um, I think Maggie, it seems appropriate to add that to one of our next work sessions, um, uh, just sitting here, with that. By all means, recommendation, hesitation, as being careful with park board and what we decide to go back and rebid this, um, we don't wanna do it too soon, just the fact we've done it, now people see what the bids are, and they know what people are bidding, and now if we go back out there again, it's, you know, they've been open now, so we have to be very cautious of that rebid process. Unless there's some changes that are made to it, that, that seems appropriate, you know, we're, uh, reducing the size, or doing this or that, a rebid, but we'll have to be very cautious on that, now that they've been open, and, yeah, people have seen what others have bid, um, so that's, now the caution on that, so we'll be prepared, um, when they're ready. Any other comments? All of them say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Public Works C one, wastewater treatment plant, empty relocation, Kyle? It's all yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff is proposing the purchase and installation of a six-foot chain link fence with three strands of barbed wire for the city's wastewater treatment plant and compost site. I'm sure none of you remember, but, uh, last summer, fall, winter, spring, Carver County wide in the car, uh, County Road Thirty, which runs alongside the wastewater treatment plant and compost site. It was found at five hundred fifty linear feet, about five hundred fifty linear feet. A fence was about twelve feet in on the county's right of way, and the county is requesting that it be pushed back about eight feet, so it is out of the immediate right of way. An immediate right of way, I'm not sure if that's a exact term, or not. Right now, they own fifty feet from the center line, and the fence is about at thirty-eight feet. They wanna push back to at least forty-two feet, so it's out of the clear lane, driving lane. I can't remember the term that they used offhand, but they wanna push back at, at least forty-two feet. The fence can't be moved completely out of the right of way because of existing infrastructure in the area, Forest Main, Lift Station, uh, EQ Pond, the dike runs right alongside there. Um, and the county is aware of this, and they are okay with it. The current fence for the wastewater treatment plant is in poor condition overall due to the fact that it is the original one. I asked Greg when I was put in, and he says about nineteen sixty-eight, or something like that, when the original pump system went in. Uh, the current, uh, there's about four hundred and forty-four linear feet of fencing at the wastewater treatment plant that needs to be completely removed and replaced with new fencing because the old fencing is not worth saving. And the total cost to replace the fence and install it is thirteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars, which includes three new side gates for the main entrance and the, uh, entrance to the, uh, Lift Station that's on site. The fence at the compost site is in very good shape overall, so the city will be able to reuse the top rail and the fabric portion of the fence. There's about a hundred and four linear feet of fencing that will need to be removed and salvaged. The total cost to relocate, salvage this portion of fence is one thousand one hundred ninety dollars. And that's the fabric, top rail, but the new, they would have to put in, uh, new posts, 'cause usually when you pull out the old ones, they bend and that kind of thing, so. Overall, the fence will be constructed of nine gauge galvanized wares, cemented corner and gate posts, three strands of barbed wire, and we'll have, uh, line posts eight feet on center, making for a strong durable fence that will last the city many years to come. And city staff will be removing the old fencing, considering the fencing that's installed. We got two bolts, one from Sterling Fence, and one from Century Fence, and Century Fence is much cheaper than, um, Sterling Fence. I also provided a few pictures. Um, these bolts are budgeted items as well, they have eighty-six thousand three hundred in the capital outlay, fourteen thousand two hundred was budgeted for this fence, the wastewater portion side, and we have two thousand in for Curisim agents that was budgeted for, uh, the compost site.
Questions?
I sent them the, yep, sent them the exact same plans and specs of both contractors, and that's what they came back with. One did a site visit, one did it, so.
Both invited to give us- We've done it for fourteen thousand two hundred.
What's that?
We've budgeted for fourteen thousand two hundred.
Out of the wastewater portion part of it, yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's coming in at fourteen five forty.
Coming in for the wastewater portion, thirteen thousand.
Oh, thirteen three fifty, okay.
Yep. The compost site, it came under, in under two thousand, one thousand one hundred.
I had separated.
I separated, yep, yep, yep.
What's, what's driving this? Why now fifty years, because of their life, or the, now, the size?
My, my question, yeah, my, my question exactly, when they told me that was, you know, that was their right of way, and then when they tell me where their right of way ends, it's right on top of our forest main, at least our wastewater plant, which looks like, or that pushes the wastewater to our wastewater plant. And also, it's right at the bottom of the dike for the EQ ponds. So, yeah, I had a, it, I, I, the main portion there, because they widen it so much, they gotta redo the drainage, and where they do have to redo the drainage, reslope everything, and they put in new culverts and everything, is right where our fence is.
Is this the current some of the work that was done because of the work that was done last month?
Yes, correct, the restoration work, exactly, that's the driving force behind it. That's why Excel has been moving all the poles out as well, so they're out of the driving lane or the immediate right of way as well. And it'll run exactly, Maggie, I don't know if you wanna scroll to the-
Um, I had to print it, I-
Oh, no, that's fine. It'll, it'll run just right behind the telephone for the power poles as it currently does right now. So it'll be kind of the same setup, just to push back to where they would like it.
So it'll be behind the new power poles, or the current power?
Mm-hmm, the new ones.
Okay.
Yeah, just how they are now currently, they sit, the fence is right behind the power poles, so it'll be just how it is now.
Now, also on here, it says exclude excavation through frost rock and backfill. Is that how much extra is back in the concrete?
That, there shouldn't be any frost or backfill or those sorts of items. They'll, they'll, they'll hammer in all the posts, they won't be concreted or anything, but the only thing that they're gonna really dig through is the concrete and post for the gates, which is included.
Excludes location of private utilities and excludes removal?
Yes, we'll have to privately locate our own utilities, which is difficult.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then removal, you're taking care of that?
Yep, yep, correct. The, the new ones are, the old one is not. Yeah, they, they have a new one in place, which is inside the fence. Yeah. So, uh, when we put the new fence in, it'll be, I mean, yes, the old will be on that side.
Any other questions for Kyle?
I, I believe there is. I, because I, yeah, I've seen wastewater plants where they've, they've actually had razor wires, and, yeah, I think from a security, with the NPCA.
Security was-
Yep. Mm-hmm. Just with the EQ pond there and everything, it's, it's difficult. Oh, it looks a little like a prison at times. (laugh) It depends on what's happening. It'll be, it should be forty-two feet. Right now, currently, it's at thirty-eight feet, and we'll, we'll have it pushed back up to forty-two feet for sure. They have fifty feet. They hate feet, but they really can't push this anymore unless we dig up Forest Main and remove the, the dike and EQ pond and-
Are they gonna, is it kinda gonna come back to us in, after a month of years and say, yeah, but we really need it fifty feet, so?
If they do, it's gonna be a big bill, because it won't, and it, it's right behind the Lift Station, too. I mean, so, yeah. I'm not sure how it ended up in the right of way to begin with, it wasn't, it wasn't a problem. Yeah, he gave them the approval. I know Greg couldn't believe it either, but, when they told us the news, they actually wanted to have us rip it out last year and everything, when they were doing the grading and everything, and we're like, uh-uh. And they, they were surveying that project for a long time, which, like, I don't know why I think they probably built-
Any other questions for Kyle?
Yeah, it needs to be done regardless, and the gates are in very poor condition. It's really tough, the whole process, so.
All of the promotions will prove very clear, the location of the security plant, um, from Century Fence, for a total of fourteen thousand five hundred. Motion, we have a second. Motion, second, any further discussion? And I agree, I think it's something we need to do, and I think we would be requiring people to step out of our right of way if we need it to, so I think we have to play nicely with the county, and, yeah, we're unfortunately, we're not supposed to have to, but-
And then the areas where we can move it back, and on the compost site, it will be back all the way out of the right of way, just as currently. It's only that little portion of fence at the compost site, that little hundred feet, potentially the right of way, but the rest of it is just right on the edge of it, and so getting the new gates, those need to, you know, we have the new gates.
Certainly do, so, it's inappropriate times. Any other discussion? All of them say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Kyle, and we'll go right in the wastewater treatment facility, twenty eighteen capital, or capital improvement, sorry.
All right. Greg, uh, put together this list of the capital improvement items that we will be hopefully getting done this year. Um, and he's, uh, looking for a motion to accept the schedule, ask the listed, just to give us a head, give you guys a heads up on kind of what price, the engineer's price, and then the price of, uh, items that we do have on hand already. So identifying the twenty eighteen wastewater treatment plant sewer fund budget capital outlay are a number of items that are, are to be replaced. The items listed in the twenty eighteen budget were taken from the new wastewater treatment facility capital improvement plan adopted by City Council in twenty fifteen. The staff's intent in this memo to identify a timeframe in which budget items will be replaced in twenty eighteen, also, uh, also which of these items fall within city's purchasing policy, policy limit of five thousand, and which items above the somehow required council approval. This is just a timeline of when we plan on doing these projects, and, um-
Yeah, I think he said purely informational, and that each item-
Yes, and as I-
That's above five thousand, it comes to that.
Well, it'll come with council regardless, correct? Depending on, uh, if it's over that five thousand dollar limit, it'll come with council as well, so we're approving the schedule right now. Approving the schedule, yes, and we'll come back with any-
Clarification, number one, we just did, and number two was done last week, correct? Or last council?
We bought the diffusers, correct.
That was approved-
Yep.
The council, yeah, okay, so we're looking at three through, through ten.
Correct. As far as the current wear and everything? Right, yeah, there's, well, that's kind of how we, how we set up the CIP, I know, for the wastewater plant, is we kind of took it, you know, as what things are worn out the most, and needs attention first. So these things are, like the fine screen agitator motor and the fine screen service wear and replacement parts, that has never been serviced, or the brushes and stuff haven't replaced for fourteen years that it's been in operation. So it's due for routine maintenance. Um, and then same with, uh, the traveling bridge filter pumps, they're as old as the wastewater plant is currently, so from two thousand four, so they're good fourteen, fifteen years old, too, which is, and the hours and runtime, but when we bring these things forward, we will-
There'll be time, and we'll make the discussion-
Bring more homework, and, yeah, more discussion on why they need to be replaced and-
Explain it, okay.
Correct, yep. I think it was just Greg's, uh, way of, of, uh, giving you guys just a heads up on what we're working on and what we're planning on doing in twenty eighteen with the capital outlay budget for the wastewater treatment plant. And a schedule for it, so he's just looking to motion to approve the schedule.
Yeah, well, that's, one of those, it could go either way, you know, certainly need a motion, unless we can just, just information, have your-
Right, right.
It's, it's not the bottom thing to do, so I make the motion, so I'm trying, if someone would like to make a motion to accept. Yeah, and we can certainly accept this, which I would agree. So then, as we get into the line items, I want us to come by and answer some of that discussion, I think to Tyson's point, would be, you know, um, like number seven, uh, for a text threat that will remove the motor, you know, would be concerned, is, would it be appropriate to maybe buy the motor and hold it, and wait till the other one burns out, we'll get another yet, and then-
Right, that, that is, that is-
You'll have it on the shelf.
Right, and that is kind of the thinking of, for that Greg and I are both thinking, it's like, okay, it's working fine, yeah, it's getting worn out, but let's wait, let's wear it until it quits, and then we have one there, and we can just take it off shelf, put it in, and just get it out.
We can have those discussions as they come, so-
Right, absolutely, mm-hmm.
We'll just accept this, um, schedule as is, going forward, and that's appropriate, Maggie, just, we'll just accept this-
Yeah, yep, mm-hmm.
As information. Perfect.
Perfect.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle. Thank you.
On our driving, let's see here, I think, okay, the motor line is right there.
I did get a call today from the company.
We can have that, we'll have that on, um...
On the business, if we need to, discuss that.
Uh, and Stan is here.
Yep, I see that. Okay, so Stan is here, we'll move back then to, uh, seven A one, uh, veterans memorial sidewalk, Stan, if you'd like to come up and, and give us a, a little view of the item?
Uh, see what you have, so.
Yep, so I, um, passed, uh, the, the picture, let me have a picture here, let me put it on here.
Okay, you got it on there?
Yep. I'll go back to it.
All right, Stan, what do you have?
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll give you just a quick update on the memorial where it's at today. Of course, you, you see out at the, uh, at the site, we've, we've done some groundwork out there, we had to put some tile, uh, some tile in, and we had to reconnect some tile that, that was draining some land behind the shed back there, so I think we've got that all in place. Uh, we, uh, in fact, I just came from the meeting, we are, uh, working on the images for the memorial itself. Uh, these are the, uh, we've got six different, uh, panels, each panel represents a branch of service and, uh, the images we, we approved tonight, we've got a, a Civil War, uh, soldier in uniform for the Army, we have World War Two uniform for a Marine, um, and, uh, the, uh, models for that, one happens to be from Mare and another one from Oconia, uh, for the Marine. Uh, we have, uh, the Navy is, uh, is gonna be a man, uh, Hispanic, uh, Indian, uh, so we, we, we're getting that image and, uh, POW, we've got a, actually the fellow that's doing a lot of the work for us, the graphic work, uh, we were, we were struggling with the POW model and, uh, he's sort of a skinny guy and we were looking at him and says, you know, I, I think we could make you work. And tonight we went over his, uh, pictures, we, we did pictures last week here in the community center and, uh, we've probably taken anywheres up to fifteen hundred photos. Uh, we've had, uh, three different shoots now already, one over at the museum in Oconia, one here and then one down at the, uh, Reserve, uh, National Guard headquarters in St. Paul, where we had, uh, models from there, so we've had, uh, got a lot, lot to choose from, but this is, this is gonna be the big thing of the, uh, of the memorial itself because those images will be, will be part of that and, and so I think we got the POW set, we got the lady, she's, she's gonna be Air Force and also colored. Maybe we can get a, a rear image. You gotta keep in mind, we, we did a study because we, we, we're not taking this lately, uh, the percentage of gals to men and which service, and it happened to be the Air Force, and I think she was someplace around eighteen, nineteen percent only, so, uh, but we, we gave her the full, full-length thing, so you should be proud of that. And then, and the Coast Guard, we, we've got another gentleman that's from down in the city, so anyhow, uh, that's where we're at. Hopefully that the, the images now are gonna be starting, uh, excluding figures, are now gonna start getting images in the panels and, uh, we're meeting just about weekly, uh, trying to get that particular set and, and then it'll go up to Cold Spring so that they can put it in. Uh, foundation for the memorial itself will go in as soon as we can, uh, and then we're gonna start digging out. As you know, that ground there is, uh, is, it was lowland, there was a lot of peat ground and stuff in there. It was also the dumping site for, uh, for filling it in, so we're, we're coming up with foundations, with, with cement and stuff, and we gotta clean that all out, it's all gotta come out. Uh, when we put the paver garden area in, um, the pavers are, this right here, that will actually be dug out, just about, all the black dirt, all the peat ground's gotta come out until we get, until we get to, uh, some good, uh, some good soil. Uh, because once it's there, we, we can't have it moving, it's gotta, it's gotta stay in place, so, uh, so we're, we're hoping to do it all, all correctly. The reason I'm clearly seeing, uh, the paver gardens, that's gonna be happening too, they're gonna be digging that out now, the, the, uh, putting more of those up, uh, and, uh, we'll probably even have some of that cement, but, uh, we're looking to do that cement work at least two, maybe three phases because the, uh, payers, we have nearly, the gardens will nearly take four thousand payers and, uh, the, right now we've got about three hundred sold and out of those three hundred, we've probably got a half of us out of California, we've got a Caplock, over, CIA person, uh, Colorado, and his wife, uh, Nevada, Texas, so far, two, Caplock, Illinois, Northern Minnesota, Florida, and then of course the rest come from the area here. See, there's no boundaries on who can be a part of this memorial, so what's going to happen is, uh, we're, we'll, we expect that there'll be a stopping off point to look at this memorial, which should have one of the biggest in the world, the, uh, they've got the closure, it's forty foot, and the uniqueness of that memorial itself, I'll show you the picture. The uniqueness of this memorial, it's not a memorial to, to any war or conflict, this is a memorial, it's a memorial to the men and women who have served in military. As long as they have served and been honorably discharged, they can purchase a paper and record their story on the website that we have got, so, and this is what makes this a one-of-a-kind, very unique type setup. Okay. The reason I'm here tonight is, uh, Memorial, Paver Gardens Parking Lot, State Highway twenty five, right, here's the Highway twenty five. If you take a look, uh, from First Minnesota and the bar and run the sidewalk all the way down from County Road thirty down to Mary Louie Yard, what we need more than anything else because this parking lot will not accommodate a school bus or a motor coach and will have, that, that, that will occur, especially a school bus, if I can see, uh, the kids coming out to that, because the ground block tunnels and stuff are going to have their, uh, their payers in there. Uh, there is one place, even on the other parking lot, like the county has, uh, where the trail, you can't pick a coach, you can't bring us the rest of it. County Road thirty doesn't accommodate for us a bus, we're gonna be into the, into the traffic lane if we try to set a bus there. But if that sidewalk lined up with the downtown here, then we would have that parking along that sidewalk that would, uh, be north and south and that would, we would designate that as a, a bus parking spot, loading and unloading. People give off, step onto the sidewalk, they can walk around and, uh, very, very safe setup because, uh, they're, they're not, they're not in the way of traffic anyway, so, uh, this is, this would help complete this, this project up, that sidewalk out there because now it'll accommodate that, that school, school bus or motor coach coming into it. Uh, what I, what I'm looking for, uh, I, I think you guys have been very supportive of this project, uh, and we appreciate that, that's been very helpful, is to, for you to say, hey, yep, this makes sense, we, we, uh, we need to, we need to be looking at it so that you're on board, that a sidewalk needs to go down. That's what we, that would be the first thing that we would need. And after that, then we have to talk about how we're going to pay for it. Uh, we as a committee have no working funds other than what we go out and beg for, and, uh, today we are, we're, we're in good shape, we can build this memorial, we can put the neighbor gardens in, we can put the parking lot in. Um, I'm hoping we, we're not going to fight, uh, with the memorial, the flags and the flagpole and the neighbor gardens, that, that should all be done and also the landscaping that's going with it. Uh, landscaping is coming from home people, it's nice, it's all the answer, we need to go, so, uh, there's donations that are coming in that, uh, we hadn't expected, so, and we, uh, the, uh, the thing that helped us out of lunch is, uh, a local veteran that passed away, uh, the old mayor, the president, and he left us in his blood, so this is a big boost that, uh, that's gonna make everything more very close to Florida. Uh, we're looking at this, 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 we'll take care of that and we should have a few hours because we're looking at the summer to a fund that will give pressure to, uh, to, uh, care, uh, the grounds, uh, into the, this, this, this.
The sidewalk, the sidewalk stand was not in the plan initially, it's been approved all the time.
Okay, right.
So we'll have to go into county right of way or state right of way, what, which right of way is that?
Okay.
Uh, I'm not sure who's right of way it would be. Mendoc is going to have to approve it, of course, because we're, we're on to state highway. Uh, this, this is part, this is county property that we have sort of a hundred-year lease on, so we have that paperwork, that's all around the place, uh, that took, you know, that took us off last summer to get that.
And that's overseen by the rail authority.
Right, by the rail authority, and, uh, so, we've got to look on, on the county with the, uh, park system, we, uh, Lumber Yard, improvement to the city, extension of that, uh, of the, uh, the city parking, you might say, or, other questions? And, uh, Mendoc had to approve, uh, exit up to the highway, uh, and of course we spoke with that because he didn't allow it, he said, well, there's one there, other changes, I saw, uh, but we got it approved, we have, we have this drive, we have approved, we have Mendoc, we have that, so we don't have, we don't have to ask for something.
So we're starting to browse there. The other thing I did, we, the last one, uh, of all the traffic, you know, because I know we guys are concerned about that number that, so, I'm thrilled, I, I can't wait till the time. So, once, once the buses, once the buses and the motor coaches drop people off, where are they gonna go park and wait?
No.
Well, if this gets approved and passed, you know, you've got the motor coaches and the buses dropping people off there, they'd stay there?
They'll be parked right on the way to the parking lot.
So how's that gonna affect visibility at the corner of twenty-five and fifty and then people coming in and out of, um, the hardware store and...
Okay, see, uh...
Because with that being a state highway, I'm a little concerned about visibility along the site.
You gotta keep in mind that your, your town is going to extend at some point, and it is already extended. There is no good way to, to get to the lumberyard by walking, you gotta walk along the highway. Uh, that, we would...
No, I'm concerned about people pulling in and out of the hardware store. But what about at twenty-five and thirty? And if they, well, and if they keep them far enough off of twenty-five too, you know, so it's not right along twenty-five, it's, it's kinda got like a little bump then.
It'd be, you know, kinda, you know, we love the park, you know, the, so, it's kinda a struggle to see, uh...
Right. Right. Because I think, I would feel more comfortable if there was like more of a place where the buses can pull in a little bit farther off.
This, but this has been approved, this has been approved, state's approved this already.
Oh, okay.
So they've, they've approved all this outside of this, outside of the sidewalk, correct?
Right.
So they've approved that and have done that study, so, and I don't know if we have a lot of jurisdiction based on, because it's a state highway, but, um, but you're looking strictly for the sidewalk, trying to get some support from us that may help when you go to the state, is, is that what you're looking for?
I, I, I do. Your support again is just like when we went the first time, the, uh, the railroad. Uh, but, uh, to, to, to inch your aim to this a little bit more, the, uh, you probably wouldn't have it, you know, the post parking on the first hundred feet because that would be the, this is where the park, where the, uh, trail...
The trail.
Comes across and, uh, you would stay away off of that, so thirty would be pretty easy to accommodate, I would say the, uh, the parking would be basically here, uh, you asked about the lumberyard, our driveway is on the south side of the property, so I don't think there's going to be much more than maybe a car space there, if either, and even if we, it doesn't have to be a lot of, so, I, I, I think that visibility is going to be, be, I think at that point, uh...
So you're just asking for approval of sidewalk in to go from the trailhead through there?
Yeah, well, just our support.
Good on that one. Uh, road roadway, we had, normally it's a hundred and there's an extra two, so it's gotta be someplace around three, three fifty. Uh, because the, in this, normally road roadway is a hundred feet, uh, where the track goes on, where the track head on on, and in town here, like in Toronto, there's an extra two hundred feet where they have the coastlines and, you know, and stuff on, so, I think that's three hundred.
Have you been to the county to get their support on this yet?
Uh, only in conversation.
Me personally, I support it. I support it, I don't have a problem with that, I, I don't think the city has much weigh-in as the county is gonna have, um, but I certainly support it, I'll offer up my support to it. Um, I, I'm not an engineer, knowing if that's what the state allows for sidewalks, how close the state highways are, you know, the state's gonna have to work through all that, but I certainly support putting a sidewalk there.
Uh, it's a safety issue, uh, it's...
The state will do their due diligence. I, I know that, so I'm not concerned from that standpoint, but, um, so I, I certainly sup, I certainly support it, um, I don't know what other thoughts are, um, I'll, I'll make a motion to offer the city's support in, um, allowing a sidewalk, additional that sidewalk, um, for the veteran memorial. Motion seconded, any further discussion? Motion seconded. Any further discussion?
They're doing an upgrade, but I don't think it goes in, it doesn't go twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty.
Yeah, and it's not till twenty twenty anyway.
Thousand, uh...
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that would be nice to, to get for that. The Veterans Memorial may be able to work with them on that, you know, and maybe with some of our help, and it'll be, I mean, we're not, financially, you know, from a financial standpoint, but we could certainly try to offer up some of that, try to...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so it'll be certainly, so, and I don't know what it's gonna need for our support, if it's just a memo from Maggie that the council supports this, or what we need, but I think we can get there, so. Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second topic, support for the sidewalk for the Veterans Memorial. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? What's your areas? Thanks, Stan.
You bet.
Thank you, Stan. Appreciate it. And like I said, work with Maggie, and then she'll get you, get a memo, or a letter, or a letterhead, whatever you need.
Yep, yep. We, we have been, in fact, with Dan Gillis, he was, he did the work on, on this, and then I understand what the city's like, uh, we're down to decide, just, uh, make a lot on hitting that, following up to, I guess, so.
Okay, thank you.
We got the Veterans Memorial in that direction.
Yeah, thank you, Stan. All right, council report. Liz, do you have any thing to report on?
I do not.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, we had the meeting, and it was more of a public meeting to discuss whether schools moving, they're around, or primary schools, and more of a, like, kind of disciplinary discussions about what this new building is gonna use for. Right now, they're thinking first, uh, things, it comes between all generations, so, right now, they're looking at infants here, or sort of, you know, some more infants there. Um, so it's just still like fifty thousand feet up, kindergarten, which I'll go there, it looks clear, so in June, so they'll have a lot of open space. So, it's kind of exciting, so I just, you know, see change that. If they're trying to move the city, they are a lot more, a lot of those conversations, and just, so a large number of years, so that, other than still connected. It's exciting.
Did they talk at all about A R E, and mishaps with that, or did he add, and what happened?
No, the official said, we didn't have our enrollment, maybe the meeting, it was, we had a forum in December, where they invited the public, anybody to come, and everybody just threw out like really crazy ideas, and then this was kind of a follow-up, but they used it in replacement of our advisory committees, so they had asked us all to come, on top of anybody that had come for the other meeting.
Okay, cool. Maybe we'll talk further of that, about that on a work session, get what you need, and see if the A T I N, you can bring back some of that information or make sure we mend that relationship, and we have some concerns with that, so we'll get you up to speed on that if you're not, and, uh...
Yeah, I don't, we'll have another meeting until, uh...
Okay, and maybe at a work session, maybe we'll have to get relationship for, for some of that, but we'll, we'll make sure we work for you and for the A T I N, and anything else?
Yeah, so, when I was reviewing the ordinance, or, um, working with the attorney on drafting the ordinance, um, to make that change, so if we do make a change, it would be at the or, like, we'd put it in the ordinance, um, that's where it should be, because, um, then we would be able to better track, you know, when we're just changing, and a lot of cities have it in ordinance, um, but the question was, do we need to put, so we, we would put the salaries in there, um, but the attorney asked, okay, do you wanna put, be clear as to what meetings we get to be at, actually, for, and so there was a discussion of the personal committee, okay, do we need to do, like, do we need to be specific, or are we, okay, leaving it in the fee schedule as, okay, like, we have a good understanding that it's like, um, if you attend, like, if you're a liaison to committees or commissions or the E D A, like, we have a clear understanding that that's what you get to be for, versus if you're just meeting a regular. Exactly.
So, we're worried about how to clarify that, let's see, can the fee scheduler make it a little more defined, but that's what, we're not gonna have to... Check that out. Any other reports?
Yeah, so I did talk with a representative from the company. They did call to notify me, um, about what happened, and, um, they did notify me that it did get cleaned up. It was, at the end of the day, so it was about four twenty, that she...
And you worked through that, you worked through that with them?
Yeah, yeah. It should be cleaned up, according to what they, what they wanted. Yeah, so, um, I, I mean, this is, my understanding is, I did reach out to the company, uh, Republic Services, just asked them, um, because my understanding was, not everybody got picked up on that day, uh, and then the rest, so the people got picked up today. Um, so I did reach out to them, just asking, um, how it went, um, you know, what happened, like, just kinda was there a reason why people didn't get picked up, um, and what can we do to prevent it next year? I haven't heard anything back yet from them, um, but I do have...
I've heard a lot of them.
Yeah.
There were cul-de-sacs about this, you know, just to...
But hopefully, I did put it on Facebook, that they would be out today finishing, um, so hopefully, everybody got picked up, and, um, hopefully, we can just make them progress. You know... Yeah, and I... Yeah, and I can give them my number. I, I mean, it is on the website, um, but, um, yeah, I, I didn't, they didn't even let me know, so that's why I'm kinda opening up on...
What do they do, what do they do to come in, Maggie?
Okay.
What do they do to come in for their six months?
Oh, the contact review?
Or the review?
Uh, I'm, I don't know. That would, I'll talk with the representative.
And again, if we have to have a work session to discuss some of these, and get some of these items, I think we need to capture, um, the access, um, as we're for it, make sure we don't have a breach of contract, make sure that we're getting the services we need, uh, make sure we're doing the right things, um, you know, and who to contact, you know, who will take care of it, so I, I think we're gonna have to have a discussion on this on a work session.
Yeah.
All right. Any other business? Any other discussion, or anything else? I want a motion to adjourn. A motion second, all three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor adjourned.